Quick agenda today. It is that time. We're just waiting on you.
I'm here.
No, I'm waiting on them. There we go. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Tuesday, November the 12th, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sherlyn, will you call the roll, please?
Council members Galloway.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Culture.
Here, thank you. We have a full house this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I'd move that we approve the agendas presented.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion about the agenda?
I have a request. I need to remove the closed session from the agenda. Postpone it until a later date, please.
All right.
Oh, just okay.
Remove the closed session for another date to be determined. Dan Wood, is that a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yep.
Melanie?
Support.
All right. Any other discussion on the agenda? Sherlyn, will you call the roll, please?
Council members Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Culture.
Yes, thank you very much. Our next item is a presentation, and we have, I believe, just one presentation this evening, but one that is near and dear to my heart, and that is a report out by our Blue Ribbon Committee on Parks and Recreation. As some folks may remember, back in the spring when I did my State of the City address, I announced that I was going to create a Blue Ribbon Commission on Parks to figure out two things. Number one, what is it that the residents would like to see in our parks that we don't currently have? And number two, how would we pay for them assuming that the general fund could not support those purchases? And so, a couple of, at least several of the members of the Blue Ribbon Committee are here, and I want to acknowledge Greg Pollica and Jeannie Davis, who both served on that task force. And it was co-led by Jill from Recreation and Lloyd from DPW. And so, happy to have you here to update the residents on where we are with our Parks Commission.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
I probably stole some of your intro, I'm sorry, but...
A little bit, that's okay. As the mayor mentioned, this is the culmination of the Blue Ribbon Parks Commission. And tonight, I'll give you a little bit of background about the group and what we've been working on since the mayor announced it back in April. We'll be sharing our survey results, and then finally, making our recommendations to council on, based on most survey results. So, as the mayor mentioned, we were tasked with identifying community needs and requested improvements as it relates to parks through a community survey, and also seeking potential funding for those improvements, and then bringing recommendations to council by the end of 2013. So, I think this is here today. I would like to thank the members of Echo, the mayor said, thank the members of the group. We do have a couple in the audience. Jack Aronson from Garden Fresh, Sean Butler from the Ferndale Schools, Jeannie Davis from the Ferndale Senior Group, Scott Helmer, Greg Pollica, the Foundation, Kristin Spiller from Oak Park Recreation, Brett Talander, Boys and Girls Club, and then co-chaired with Lloyd and myself. All right. So, the group initially met back in May, and in May and June, we worked to finalize a park survey that we wanted to send out to the community. Initially, we thought, why not resend up the survey that we used for the master plan that was done back in 2009? Survey's already in place, we'll resend it out, and we'll be able to compare results. After reviewing that survey, the group decided, a little bit cumbersome, so we took information from that survey to modify it and to meet our needs, and get the information that we wanted to get. Our three main goals in sending out the survey, we wanted to find out who was responding, their age, where they lived, what parks the respondents were currently using, and why, and then what amenities should be added. And so, we, based on that information, we finalized our survey and began distributing it in July and August. We distributed it through the city website, Survey Monkey, Facebook, press releases. We sent out the link to various neighborhood groups. We utilized something new. We created a QR code in DPW, posted signs in all of our parks, so folks could easily answer the survey on the go. In September and October, we compiled the results, and now we're bringing forth those recommendations. Survey results. I want to go give you just a little bit of background on the response that we got. We had 281 total respondents. Our highest response rate was in the age range 35 to 44 years old, and majority of our, almost half of our respondents lived in Quadrant Four, south of Nine Mile Road, rest of Woodward. Fifty-three percent of respondents had children ages five to 12. I think it's interesting to note that that information compared to the master plan survey results in 2009 mirrors each other. So, the highest response rate back in 2009 of that age group was 35 to 44. So, all of that mirrored the responses in the master plan survey. We also asked folks what parks they currently use, and these are the top four parks that are currently being used: Geary, Martin Road, Harding, and Garbutt. And again, this information mirrors the master plan results back in 2009 as well. And then you can see the current top uses in all of those parks: sporting events, soccer, baseball, hockey, basketball, uses for picnics, gatherings, walking, or school or community events. So, the next part of the survey, we asked folks what amenities they wanted to see in our parks. We broke it down into three different categories. The first, park design, so those are walking paths, sitting areas, community gardens, pavilions. The second, park infrastructure, could be your new play structures, dog park, community gathering spaces. And then the third, sport facilities, whether it be disc golf, new athletic fields, pickleball, et cetera. And based on the response to those questions, we decided it was best to break it down into two different categories. We received a lot of feedback on the maintenance side of things that we currently have that just need to be improved, and then also results on new and improved items that people want to see. So, I'm going to invite Lloyd up. He's going to be discussing the maintenance repairs that came out of this.
Just a short comment on this slide. The restrooms are not currently open. They're only open during scheduled events, and that's primarily because of extensive vandalism we have in the parks and security concerns. We've been addressing that, mostly due to improvements in the park as far as visibility, including lighting and tree trimming, that sort of thing, to make the park more open and visible. Jill and I are also exploring the opportunity, and will present to city manager during budget time, possibly adding park rangers, who might be on schedule at high priority times, to just make rounds in the parks and to, you know, be visible security presence. It's something that we're going to explore and bring to the city manager. The other items on the chart, additional lighting, benches, seating areas, trees, those are all things that DPW is doing with its current budget. Starting the end of last year, we began removing many vandalized, damaged benches, replacing them, spring riders, all the things that I have already spoken to council about. But, you know, in addition to that, we've just increased the manpower and man-hours that we spend in the parks to try to do what we can do under our existing budget. And so, you know, we will be, you will see some of the comments from both the committee and the general public, as they'd like to see some recycling in the parks. Some of the neighborhood groups have pointed that out, and obviously, that's a great idea. We're going to do that. We're going to work out how that will be sorted or picked up, you know, with our hauler or with DPW personnel. But all in all, all of these items, except for the restrooms, I mean, we've already removed dead and diseased trees, you know, that might be unsafe, cleared some fall zones. So, as you go through the park, you know, I think you'll see those items being addressed. But the one item that we still have to come up with a plan will be regularly opening the restrooms.
So, the next section is the proposed new amenities. And these are the top five based on the survey results: pools, splash pad, improved play structures, walking paths within our parks, a dog park, and a disc golf course. In the anticipated cost column, under play structures and walking paths, those figures are from the CIP that we submitted last year, that Lloyd and I worked on, and that included, for play structures, that included five new structures. And walking paths, that included paths in nine of our parks. So, that's the max amount based on our CIP submittals from last year. As you can see, just paid a cost, dog park, $10,000, and disc golf course, $8,000 to $10,000. So, the next step is how, you know, how we're going to fund these potential improvements. The pool and splash pad, while it may not be feasible at the moment, we are working on, it may not be feasible for us to build our own pool or splash pad, but we are currently working on an agreement with Oak Park to be able to utilize their pool at the resident rate. So, that may be something we'll be able to offer our residents as well. We also currently have a joint use agreement with the Ferndale Schools, and our department a few years ago used to offer swim lessons over there, and that is something that we can look at bringing back. So, we do have that opportunity as well as it relates to the pool. Both the play structures and walking paths, we feel that potential funding could fall under the DNR grants. There are two grants that we would qualify for. The information for both of those grants come out in January of this year. The deadline to apply is April 1st. The first is the Recreation Passport Grant, and you can apply up to three projects per year. And one project could include the same amenity in multiple parks. So, it might include three play structures in three different parks, but it would only be considered as one project. The max on the award amount for the Recreation Passport Grant is up to $45,000 with a 25% match, and that could be donations, general fund, that sort of thing. The second DNR grant is the Trust Fund Grant, and that grant, they have no limit to the number of applications. And same sort of thing, one application could cover the same amenity in multiple parks. And their award is $20,000 up to $300,000, and again, with a 25% match. And then, as it relates to play structures, again, we've also looked at, into some other playground grants, some community build programs. Kaboom is one of them. I know there's another one, Engineers Without Borders, I believe. And they also offer different funding for improved play structures. The dog park, we discussed, that could be a user fee type situation where, you know, we're charging next amount of money for residents to use the dog park. And that might be something where we start out small. It might just be a fenced area at first, and then something we can build on as time goes on. And for the disc golf course, the group has been contacted by some business owners that are interested in funding that project, so that is an option as well. Does anyone have any questions so far?
I have one.
Yeah, this would be a good time to pause.
Yeah, regarding the potential for play structures and walking paths, ADA compliance included in the cost estimate there?
That was included in the CIP.
Everything's going to be ADA compliant?
Mm-hmm. That is a requirement for both of those grants going forward. It has to be, fall under the ADA compliance.
Okay.
One of our problems with the current infrastructure in our parks has been maintenance. And, you know, every 10 years or so, we get somebody to install new play structures or new item in there, and then we don't do such a great job of maintaining it. Is ongoing maintenance involved, included in these expenditures, or how are we going to account for that?
With the DPW's normal annual budget, would not be a problem at all.
Okay.
With our current staff and budget, particularly with new play structures, if you maintain it from the beginning, the newer play structures that aren't wooden are going to have, you know, a nice lifespan as far as, you know, and maintenance won't be that difficult, painting and, you know, keeping up with it on an annual basis rather than letting it deteriorate to the point where it has to be removed.
To clarify, that, when Lloyd came on board, that was one of the first things he did, was reallocate his staffing to ensure that proper maintenance was done to the parks. So, actually, that was one of the first things that Lloyd did when he came and readjusted the budget, and has remained committed to doing that. So, he did make that adjustment last budget year, and plans to do that moving forward.
If I may, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority has recommendations for playground safety and certain standards, and I know you've been addressing many of those.
Absolutely.
You've been aligned. Does the additional maintenance and playground equipment bring us completely compliant with those recommendations, or does it get us closer, or...?
We're on our way, because really, we're at the point in some of the parks where the play structures have to be removed. I just think that they've reached the point where either they may no longer be safe. And so, with the deterioration that takes place, Garbutt in particular, you know, I believe that that one, that wooden play structure should come down soon. And so, you know, and because it isn't an option on some of this outdated equipment that doesn't meet the standards, to make a repair anyway. We only make the repair when we can bring it to the current, to the proper standards.
So, could a possible next step in addition to this, because I think this plan is great, and I also, since we're talking, just want to commend everybody who work on it. I mean, this is terrific. But I think an additional next step I would recommend we could add to this plan, but then once, if we implement these steps, like do a gap analysis to say, okay, here's what the rest of the way we need to do to get us there. You know, I understand the direction was to look on amenities and maintenance based on community priorities, and that's absolutely think the right thing to do, but it would still be good to know where on our way is, and I know we've made great progress in what the rest of the way looks like, or what it needs to.
I have some questions, too. I think those are all fantastic questions that everybody has asked already. I was wondering, are the underutilized parks that didn't make the top four, are they the ones with underutilized or old equipment, so people are avoiding them, so they don't make it into the top four? I was just wondering, have they been neglected, so people just aren't using them? Neglected in terms of older equipment, so they aren't attracting people to them?
Geary Park is probably our most modern park as far as the play structures. The rest of them are pretty deteriorated. I mean, it's the point where, as I said, they need to be replaced. They're, you know, we can maintain fall zones. We can be sure that there's clear areas around the equipment installed according to manufacturer's instructions. But, you know, we're at this point because we do need to improve them. We really do. They have to be removed, and at that point, you know, obviously, there'll be no attractions for people to go there unless they want passive, you know, exercises. So, yeah, we're at the point where some of those parks probably aren't being used because they're not attracted for that.
Okay. My other follow-up question, then, relating to the four parks and the five new structures for the play, for those parks, are the five new structures targeted for the top four used parks, or are they targeted to the, some other parks that aren't listed here?
Although I don't have that list in front of me tonight, I can tell you that the way they were prioritized had to do with which ones were in need of replacement the most. So, it was a, you know, a situation where you had to triage.
Right. I sit, I serve as the city council liaison to the CIP Committee, and we met, and everything is going on track as planned. But my concern and question is, is what happens if we don't get these grants? The CIP has projected not replacing park equipment until 2016, so we have a two-year gap before we actually address buying new structure equipment if we don't get the grants. So, that's sort of one of the downfalls, if that's my understanding of the CIP and where we are with that.
I can talk a little bit on that.
Okay.
The CIP is just a planning document that can be readjusted based on priorities. So, because of this commission, there is potential that as we prioritize the dates and the years for those larger projects, that they can be moved up or down based on where we prioritize. So, while they may not be scheduled until 2016, that doesn't mean that when we, if council during goal-setting or during this prioritize and say, what would our CIP look like by moving that up, we can do that, because that's all that is, is a planning document that's meant to move with the priorities and the needs of our residents and our council, because some things are absolutely, you know, generators are different than fighting over, you know, a park. So, there is options there.
Right. And just to give you some timing, the CIP meeting, the group met first before I saw this presentation. So, that's what's slated in there now.
Right, and that was from last year. So, actually, right now, we're taking applications from all of our staff right now for new stuff and to reassess timelines as well. So, it's definitely a working document that's planned, we plan on having changed quite often, actually.
Okay. And then my final question is, since we budgeted it out, how much we need for play structures, have we picked the type of play structure that we want to be in the park?
Representative examples, you know, particularly based on the age group that the structure would be targeted at, that certainly is not a final decision.
Okay.
I do have one more. I'd also like to, I think, have further conversation, because I think if the, it's a great question, what happens if we don't get the grants, but even if we do get the grants, a 20% investment's $82,000, so we need to consider where that's, and what alternatives that's coming from. Does it come from the general fund? Do we apply to the community foundations for, to make up part of that? I think that match can also come from other grants. I don't think it has to come from the general fund.
Talk a little bit about, well, a couple of things. The paths, which were interesting to me, because I think that idea first came from the seniors who had talked about that as a way to get out, especially in the colder months, and when you, and, you know, you can walk on your... So, talk a little bit about what those would look like, what they would be made of, and what the vision is for the, for the walking paths in the parks.
Eight foot wide. It actually serves a couple of purposes. Provides ADA accessibility, because you can lead those paths to walkable or trans, I'm sorry, I can't think of the word right now, but there's a transfer station that's required on each playstation, so that people of limited ability can, you know...
Can get to the playstations, yep.
And those paths would connect with those transfer stations. They also provide, you know, enjoyment as far as walking in the park. And the other thing that would be, that might improve a lot of the attendance in the park, is that designed properly and with the proper equipment in the DPW, it would not be that labor-intensive for us to actually keep those open year-round. There may be a slight delay if we have a heavy snowstorm, but, you know, certainly, that would be on the list after the priorities to complete major roads and walkways, to go into the parks next and clear those pathways with a broom or a truck or a piece of equipment that's appropriately sized. And so, what that will do is open those parks up throughout the year.
So, I'm sorry to clarify, what are the paths made of? I mean, is it just...
It would be an asphalt path laid on crushstone, you know, approximately with proper maintenance, 20-year lifespan before it would need an overlay.
And, because I don't recall what happened in our last couple of meetings, but the dog park, which was, we heard again and again and again, and we've heard that for years. Location, have we...
Hasn't been selected, but ideally, it would be a park that would be suitable for the, possibly a longer, you know, dog park, so that if the, they have an area to fetch with the dog or frisbee. In addition to that, we would try to select an area that might be by, not necessarily be right next to a residential area, that would provide a buffer. There's a couple of parks that come to mind with that. And the $10,000 figure is very low. We're talking about a basic fence with a double gate entrance that the DPW could install, so to keep the cost down. And then our idea for user fees, I think, Jill, you were the one who told me about, one of the adjoining communities who has a dog park, they actually have a certification process that has to take place for the dog, and, you know, that he's a good neighbor kind of dog and not aggressive. Once they obtain that, then they can come to city hall, they could, residents could be one fee, citizen, users outside of the city zone would be possibly another, give them a swipe card, have the device installed, and council could even earmark the user fees for future improvements of the park. And so, there's a, there's a few options. I mean, we can get our foot in the door for a relatively low amount with the DPW constructing it.
Good.
Any other questions on this?
No.
Good, okay.
Good work.
I do want to say, very creative use of the QR code as it relates to putting all of the signs in the parks. That actually, if I'm not mistaken, Jill, you guys had double, overdouble the response than you had at the first, when they did it in 2009. So, it kind of was a good example for us in some future things that we could use to gather input. It worked, seemed to be very, very well, the QR code. They had installed signs in every park, that people could just scan it, and it went right to the survey, so it was really cool.
Great idea.
I'm sorry, I may have one other question based on this slide. Just to be clear, assuming we do get the DNR grant and things align, as you kind of see, when would we start to see those improvements in the parks? Like, when would we see the new play structures? When would we start to see the walking paths?
Maybe as quickly as the end of next summer.
Thank you.
The Recreation Passport Grant, they, the deadline is April 1st, and then I believe it's sometime late summer, early fall where they make those recommendations. The Trust Fund takes a little bit longer, but definitely within 2014.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, great job.
The first one, obviously, on this next step. We've heard for years, a swimming pool is on people's minds and wish lists, but that is cost prohibitive at this point, unless we get a real major donor. But, we're going to get creative about that one and work with the City of Oak Park to utilize their facility, and you mentioned our high school pool as well, might be an option there. But the City of Oak Park has been very kind to work with us and allow our residents to use that park beginning next summer, right? Assuming we get that agreement. Assuming we get that agreement in place.
Yes, and there'll be more information coming on that soon. Next recommended step, again, applying for the DNR grants, and that information comes out in January. And then the third, facilitate a community build project with a local neighborhood group. Well, the Dales is very active, and actually have a meeting set up with a couple of representatives this week to kind of see what their needs are, kind of get the ball rolling with them on that.
Either of our members of the Parks Commission want to add anything?
No.
No? Wait, come on up, because we can't hear you. Sorry, you said no, but I'm going to make you do it anyway.
I deliberately told all the seniors about the walking path, so you can't renege on it. We're so excited, because Lloyd said that we would, they would even salt it. So, you know, you can't really go out and walk in the winter with the ice. You always get the one bugger in the middle of the block that doesn't, you know, plow or salt or anything, so this is going to be absolutely great. And the dog park won't be bad.
Thank you. So there's no action required of council this evening. We'll probably flesh out a little bit more of the details, some of the stuff that we've talked about here tonight, maybe begin to give you some photos of the play structures and get a sense of what those sort of things look like. But it was a good time, the group has really sort of completed its work in terms of identifying what the options were. I want to also thank Lloyd and Jill very much for your co-chairing that, and all the members of the group. You did a really nice job. We had a great input from the community. Now, I'd also mention to the community that this is your opportunity. Those were the sort of the top five things that came out that we thought were doable within a short period of time, within the budgets that we might be able to put together. Did we hit the mark? Did we really miss the mark? If there's something there that you love and want to make sure you pat us on the back, about do that. But if there's something you really think is missing, do that as well. I'd recommend, how should they do that, actually? I'm telling them to let us know, but would that be a... Could we have them...
Well, could we move the presentation to the forefront of the website instead of embedded in the agenda and then have some kind of...
You can redirect that somewhere.
That is an excellent idea. So go to our website, look over this presentation, and then if we could have some kind of a reply, you know, a contact link on there for any last comments or questions would be great. So, thanks, everybody, appreciate it. All right. That is our only presentation this evening, so we're going to move on to call to audience. Call to audience is your opportunity to speak for up to three minutes on any item that's not on the agenda, except for the Parks Commission, I suppose, you could talk to that since we're done. Give us your name, your address, and three minutes to say whatever you'd like to, to the council and the residents. Would anyone like to address council this evening?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. On July 18th, 2013, I was given misinformation by April Lynch in her letter dated May 13th, 2013. It took 72 days for April Lynch to respond to that letter that was dated May 8th of mine. On September 9th, 2013, I read her correspondence dated May 13th to this council. Within this correspondence, April Lynch had stated, "I apologize, I had put your letter in your file and failed to forward it on." That's why it took her 72 days. September 9th, 2013, I specifically asked April Lynch in front of this council, "What file did this city have on me?" April Lynch had replied, "The folder that I had submitted to you." That folder was submitted to you on June the 6th, and your letter was written May 13th. How could you have talked about the file on May 13th when you were not even aware of it until June the 6th? That's the part I don't understand.
Sure, mail stacks up. I thought they were all part of one thing, so it was two weeks apart, so that's why. I probably hadn't even opened your letter till I got the bigger file.
Well, I still don't understand how you would write about it in a letter on May 13th when you didn't have the file for almost three weeks.
There might be more than one file that you're talking about, that you had sent some original correspondence, and I had put it with that. So we'll have to talk about that. I'm not really sure, but that's, you had given quite a bit of information in a month time span, so I had put it all in one spot together. So I'm not sure. I'll have to, you and I will have to talk about that. I don't have the information.
Okay, no, fine, fine. I just, you know, I was confused on that, so I wanted to...
Sure, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Just to get up and warm up while you walk to the podium. All right, seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda. We consider those routine motions, routine matters that we enact in one motion unless something is pulled by council. Let me read the consent agenda now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 28, 2013. Item B is the approval of the December 2013 special assessments, delinquent accounts, as submitted by our finance director. And C is the approval of the bills and payrolls, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to, are you getting ready to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say that I move that we adopt the consent agenda. As entirety.
He's a short timer, you know, you gotta give him a break. Would you support that?
I would support it.
You'd support that, wouldn't you? All right. Move by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Any discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
I just have one piece. I'd like to request that the next time we do the 2013, or next time we do the tax rule assessments, part of the goal of this, I think, is to make one last, not only for us to approve them, to move on to liens, but also, I think, so the one last chance folks get to see that they may be on the list, and the list isn't really organized in a manner that facilitates that. It's kind of, it's by account number, which is meaningless, so if I have to go look to see if I'm on it or whatever. I think it would be just a more user-friendly document if we can sort it by address or alphabetize it, so you can know, you know...
Isn't it by street?
No, I jumpstart.
So do you also want it timed sooner? Because this is, we would, so you wanted a meeting prior to when it would have to be...
No, I'm just saying if we publish it on the agenda, when we publish it, if we can organize the report in a more functional manner, to be able to search it better.
Sure.
I think that would be helpful.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Sherlyn, will you call the role, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Item seven is the regular agenda, and item A is the consideration of sewer line cleaning and video invoice. April, are you going to introduce that, or is that back to Lloyd?
I'm going to give that to Lloyd.
I have a fair amount of information to offer the council, so...
Yes.
As council is aware, the city received 36 complaints of flooding in summer, beginning of August, and in, under an emergency basis, we did hire a contractor for, to do sewer cleaning, inspection, root cutting, and videoing of the lines. As I spoke to council before, we took the unusual step when we did not identify a number of problems that residents were complaining about, we didn't identify the cause. We took the unusual step of actually doing what's called a lateral launch through the service lines for individual properties. When we did that, we found 21 homes that had infiltration of roots or were collapsed on the private property portion. The remaining, we either had, we did not identify a problem, which was probably out of the 15 remaining, maybe five. And then the ones that were left, we had a number of them that, you know, there's no way to know definitively, but that may have been impacted by large root balls, like the one I showed in the video, that were protruding from private property lines. And then there were some scattering of tree roots that had infiltrated our own main, the city's main. So that pretty much summed up the other 15 complaints. The, altogether...
Hang on there. So 21 where we've identified that we think there was an issue with the line to the home.
We had video, and we invited the property owners in. And in actuality, too, even though there was an expense, you know, that was attached to that, we were able to identify not just that there was a problem, but where the problem was. We met with a number of plumbers so that we could try to limit the expense to our residents. And we've already, you know, digging up one spot in particular, when you know it's 36 feet off of the main, is a lot different than digging the entire thing up until you find it.
Right.
And so many homeowners don't have the knowledge or expertise or equipment to be, you know, to do this, and the expense is considerable. But because we didn't have an answer for them, after discussing it with the city manager, it seemed the most appropriate thing to do was to, you know, try to really, because we had so many calls, to try to really nail down whether we had a problem or whether it was a problem on private property. All total...
But hang on, so I was still getting to my question, which is, so that leaves these 15 or so that you said are, were sort of not direct, not obviously related to a sewer, a lead line. And so, could you explain again, so some of those may have been a result of the growth into our, into the city sewer?
Yes.
And them being adjacent to that may have impacted theirs?
You know, if there were a number of them in a row, you know, when we, we respond to every call we get. So when we go out, as I've explained before, I don't mean to repeat myself, we automatically pop the covers upstream and downstream and look for rising water in the structure. That indicates that there's some sort of a slowdown blockage in the pipe itself. We responded to that and did not find that occurring. So, you know, after, the DPW was also involved in this and spent considerable amount of time out cleaning and jetting. But when we did not identify a problem, or we had already been to the area and then had returned calls in those 15 or so homes, we went to the unusual step of videoing the line in order to really identify it. And as that video showed the night when I did the presentation, it was surprising in a very clean pipe, how large the root ball had grown. In a pipe that had been cleaned in, all of the city was done from proceeds that were remaining from a bond the city had in 2008, 2009. All the city was cleaned, which is unusual to do an entire city in one fell swoop. Typically, which is where we'll be moving forward, typically that's done on a rotating basis in sections. Anywhere from a three to a five-year plan is typical. And, you know, in the past, the DPW has been, has not been systematic in its approach to cleaning those systems. We've been more reactionary since 2008, 2009. It's only a few years, but certainly what the video shows is, a few years might make a difference. And so we're going to, we're going to be doing a more systematic approach based on districts in a three- to five-year schedule, and it should really get ahead of any of the problems, and we'll know about them ahead of time. And then as we run into obstructions, or we identify, you know, maybe a main is slower than it should be, we have that option still to call the contractor and to videotape. Altogether, there was 12,000 linear feet of light cleaning and videotaping that took place on the city system, 1,000 feet of heavy cleaning and videotaping, and an additional 3,000 feet of videotaping that occurred, which included the lateral launches. And all of the work that was done under that scenario was done in the areas where we received complaints. You know, we initially, at least as far as the contractor goes, but the DPW, when we were trying to locate any of these problems and correct what we could, we actually did a much larger area. So as we go forward, the final thing that I'd like to offer council is, you know, as we go forward with our three-to-five-year plan, this would obviously be year one, because we did a very large area and went to the extent of videotaping. So we're well ahead of the game as far as a three-to-five-year schedule, and we'll be looking at, going forward of quantifying, you know, how much we can handle in a given year. We're also developing a list of what I would call, you know, areas that need a high level of maintenance, you know, because some areas, based upon the users, may be contributing a larger amount of grease to the line, and so you put them on a more regular maintenance schedule. And so you would, what you would have, as I've mentioned before when I described such a system, is that you have an area that you cover geographically, but you also have an annual list of, you know, areas that need additional attention on a regular basis.
Questions of Lloyd?
Councilman Lennon? You have established a regular maintenance schedule, and either them to be cleaned or at least cameras set down, so we don't have this problem in the future.
By the end of the year, we will have that all quantified. I mean, we're done for 2013, and we did well beyond what would be required under a regular plan. But by the end of the year, though, we will have the three-to-five-year plan identified and put in place, so that probably around March, we'll actually begin cleaning those systems again, you know, for the 2014 schedule, with the goal of having it completed by the end of the year. And so based upon what happens, weather-wise or other emergencies that may occur that the DPW responds to, if we miss a street or two, what we would do is add that to the coming year. And this is something that we can do probably seven, eight months of the year, depending upon, you know, what's, what section we're doing and what we find. But, you know, during the winter, we're snow falling, October, November is leaf collection, and takes, you know, takes the full staff to do that.
I understand. You find there's more problems on the low-line areas on the east side than west?
You know, yeah, actually, that's true. You know, part of the problem is the age of the lines, not necessarily the city's lines. As we found out when we went in and videotaped, you know, you're dealing with service lines coming out at individual homes that are 60, 70, and sometimes more older. And they've, they, just like our park equipment, they've reached the end of their life, and so they have to be replaced. A number of residents have taken that step. In fact, after we identified this and showed them the videos, that's what was going on in many of these cases.
Okay, good, Lloyd. And just one more comment, I'll let anybody else speak. There was enough complaints towards, you know, your department to get involved and do what you did. You did a good job, and you really kept us updated on the work being performed. However, you didn't keep us updated on the bill. And that was my stiffer shock this weekend when I looked at the agenda. It's over and done with, and it's got to be paid, but it is a large amount.
Well, I won't point fingers, but I was aware of what the cost was per hour, and what that hourly cost included was a full crew, the eighth vehicle, the Vactor, and also the equipment necessary. So there's a lot of costs that add up in doing that, and the equipment is not something that, even at, you know, we're not going to be in a position where we're paying, you know, $70,000 a year for videotaping, but, you know, even if it was half that amount, I would not recommend purchasing the equipment. It's delicate, and it's very expensive. You're dealing with not tens of thousands, but hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment. In order to find cameras that will work in that environment and have the ability to go up individual service lines and to provide video that you saw, it's very expensive and very technologically advanced. But when you need it, it works.
Well, I understand. It's over and done with. Good work, thank you.
Dan, you had your hand... Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I want to echo Mike's sentiment in that you did a great job in communicating all the work you were doing, and I appreciate all the work of you and your team. But you mentioned the Vactor, can you... Can you explain that to me? That's actually the cleaning process, right, of the vacuuming out of the?
There's, on a typical vector, I mean, they can be equipped pretty extensively at times, but a typical vector will have a suction tube that is manually operated. I mean, it can lift to the general location, and then usually there's a man who's guiding the, or a person who's guiding the, the tube itself. And then there's also a jetter, which provides pressurized water to allow it, if you find, many times the systems age, there may be a dip in the pipe, or there may be some, something that's been entered the system that isn't flowing. So by providing that additional pressure water, pressurized flow, it will push it down into a manhole and allow the vector to vacuum it out.
So about half this invoice is tied up in vacuuming, which was 15 an hour or so there. So that goes beyond the TV equipment. Part of this is that emergency cleaning that we did.
Actually, sometimes we have multiple crews out. What we were doing is, and the vector, there's also a cutter that you can put on that jet, and you put it in the main, and it will cut the sides of the main where roots have infiltrated, including those private lines. So there's a lot of things that go on, but we actually have multiple crews out at one time for a good period in order to respond as quickly as possible, including the DPW. The DPW's vector and crew was out every day. I mean, we were, we were following up behind them in order to cut down on those hours that were being contracted out. We were out jetting and, and moving them to do things that we couldn't do.
So for your ongoing plan, then, the vacuuming, I don't know if that's the right word or not, sorry, would that be a regular activity in your maintenance plan going forward?
Absolutely.
In that three to five years? And is that something that we would require further contracts to support? Do we own a vector somewhere?
We own a vector, and we do keep it quite busy. It's one of our main pieces of equipment. We use it on water main breaks, sewer backup, sewer breaks. I mean, it's a, it's a well-used piece of equipment. What's interesting about a vector that changes the nature of work that we do, I'm old enough that I was around when they were first being introduced. What happens is, it's rather than excavation, you're, you can vacuum, you know, and by doing that, you know, it, not only is it less manually intensive, but it's, it's much safer. You're vacuuming the dirt out from gas lines, electrical lines, and that sort of thing, and it protects that infrastructure, and it also protects the employee, because the employee is not down there amongst those utilities in a hole, you know, digging and supervising perhaps a backhoe, which has its limitations.
So then on an ongoing basis for your plan, then we wouldn't need to contract those services out? We have the capacity within the department today to do this on a regular basis?
The only thing, yes, yeah, yes, we do. The, we're filling a number of vacant positions currently, at least we're advertising for them, and we'll be conducting some interviews. We're well along in that, in that process. But, you know, we can certainly handle the vacuuming and normal jetting. When it gets to the videotaping and, or, you know, contracting out the actual cameras that lateral launch, that's something that we will definitely have to contract.
Okay. I'm less concerned about the videotaping, because that seems more of a unique situation that we have to do that reg, on a regular basis, but, you know, it's, it's a pretty expensive light item, and to understand what the future costs will be, I mean, obviously we have to do it, we have to have that maintenance, we have to have that schedule, and what our capacity is today versus future liabilities, so. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, Scott?
We might want to distribute the purchasing policy and the procurement policy to everyone up here. It's been a long time since we looked at it, and I suspect, you know, there's some probably some folks, certainly Greg, who haven't really studied it a whole lot before, and it's, goes through all this stuff. But I guess I just wanted to clarify, we had, in the, in the summer, a number of heavy rains, and we had a street or two streets of residents complain about their basements flooding, concerned that it was some defect in our system. And the city, within a number of days, sent crews out there to investigate, essentially found no problems, but kept looking. And then we hired Deutsche Industrial Services to do some further work. So in response to those citizens' concerns, if we monetize the expense of our DPW workers, we might spend almost $200,000 responding to those folks, right? If we, if we say that the DPW did almost the same amount of work as?
Yeah, well, certainly, certainly it would be upwards of $100,000.
Well, I just think we ought to point that out when someone inevitably comes in and says that we didn't do anything because we didn't spend millions or tens of millions of dollars to replace our whole sewer system on the lower east side. You know, we did do something, and I think we did something significant, you know, on a pretty expedited basis.
One additional thing that I forgot to mention is, as part of this process, which we would not have identified, was we found two lines in particular that we may be looking at moving their schedule up to have them lined. We found them to be much more deteriorated than was originally projected, and that in itself is really worth something, because now we can plan to have it lined rather than get a call at 2:00 in the morning that, you know, a whole block of sewer main went out, and we have to replace it on an emergency basis. So there is a lot of advantage, and plus it documents the condition of the main now that we can use for years to come, too, with the video.
Well, I would like to chime in, too.
Please.
For, for friends who were, who were reading all of this stories in the news, I called it the mystery diagnosis, and the city had to do what it needed to do to help out our residents, and I think everybody did an exemplary job of trying to uncover what really was at the root, no pun intended, of the problem, and did a great job. And I think, I just wanted to state that council was kept abreast of our emergency response services and choices, and so I expected a high cost in order to address this problem. So my final question, or my only question here, is what does, what does the $80,000 do to the fund balance in the water and sewer fund? What, what kind of position does that put us in? Does it, we're normal, we're fine?
We're normal. Repair and maintenance, we're absolutely fine. It didn't tank that fund by any means, so.
Okay.
Lloyd, my own, since everybody asked really all the things I wanted to know, the only thing that's, I'm still wondering is, have we had complaints in that neighborhood since the, the main incidents?
No, not at all, not one.
Not a single complaint?
Several heavy rains, not a single complaint. I really believe that through all the extensive work that these areas have resolved. That doesn't mean that there may not be another area somewhere in the city that we get a call from, but we're, we're in very good shape compared to where we were just a few months ago.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
And move that we approve the emergency expenditure of $80,350 for the purpose of videoing cleaning select sewer and water lines throughout the city and to be taken from the account Water and Sewer Fund Repair and Maintenance Account 592-000-775.
Support? Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Last questions or comments on this item? Sherilyn, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That I adopted. Lloyd, thank you for all the work that you did on spearheading that. Our next item would be the call to council. Please, chief, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Nothing for the city.
Nothing for the city?
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you very much. Today, actually, right? Yep. Lloyd, anything else from DPW? Yes!
We have one final thing.
Good, I have a question for you, too.
Throughout the month of November, we are having a recycle bin sale, and the cost picked up at the DPW is $6. So it's a bargain, and obviously, it's, we want to encourage our residents to recycle. There is some value in that in order to help keep our rates down, and so if you, if you need extra bins, please come to the DPW at 521 East Camborn or for a bin.
It's getting to be our annual sale. A question I had from a resident, which is, the December 1st ending of curbside leaf pickup. It seems like, and maybe it's too early to tell, but it seems like fall is a little later this year. It seems like leaves are falling a little later this year. Will you adjust that date if need be?
We don't anticipate that we will have to, and the problem that we run into is that as we move further into the season, and as we've noticed in the last couple of days, when we start getting ice and snow along with leaf pickup, they just don't mix well, and what happens is, is that exponentially what happens is, it takes us longer and longer to do the same amount, because the leaves have to be scraped, they're frozen to the pavement. But certainly, if we're able to pick up leaves after December 1st, and there are areas that we did not get to, which I don't anticipate happening, we will be there.
Thank you. And we can let residents know that by our communication vehicles.
Lloyd, while you're standing there, do you want to just give an overview on leaf pickup and for people what they need to do, just a reminder to our residents?
Well, one of the, one of the complaints that we've had from some residents is that some residents are placing leaves across the street from their own home. They pile them up, and of course, that's not very neighborly if someone wants to use, use their own. If they want to use their own parking space in front of their home, that might be a difficulty. We have, because the leaves are coming down a little bit later this year, last year we were well ahead of the game by now. You know, we are concerned about getting out there, but wherever we see, I mean, you know, it's, it's kind of the statement of Bonnie and Clyde, why do you rob banks? It's where the money is. Well, if the leaves are out there on the curb, that's where we're going to be. You know, so if the residents can get them to the curb, we will do everything we can. We're having the crews work longer hours and respond on Saturday, so, you know, we're, we're going to do everything we can, weather permitting.
And as the, the fire chief reminds us, don't park on the piles and leaves ignite your car.
First of all, you can't vacuum if you're parked on them, so.
That's the first problem, but a more important problem is, it will, it could ignite your car, as it has. Thank you. Thanks, Lloyd. Joe, anything else from recreation?
Oh, it's tough moving around, isn't it?
Just one announcement, we're currently accepting vendor applications for our annual holiday showplace, Arts and Crafts Fair, coming up on Saturday, December 7th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Applications are available on the city website, as well as at the Kulik Center. And the deadline to get your application in, I believe, is December 2nd or 3rd, so that week before the event.
And quick question for you, and I know you don't run the Jack and Annette Ernst and Boys and Girls Club of Ferndale, but how is the transition? How's the new tenants at Kulik Center? How's that all working out?
The new tenants at the Kulik Center, it's going very, very well. The transition has been incredibly smooth. They're up over 40 members, and they average between 25 and 30 students coming daily. So, yeah, it's going incredibly well. We're, we're still, we're very excited to have them.
And remind residents, where, if they want to participate, where should they go to enroll their kids?
They can come to the Boys and Girls Club during club hours, Mondays from 2:00 to 6:00, and then Tuesday through Friday from 3:00 to 6:00. They can contact the unit director, Rachel Frank. Her information should be on the Boys and Girls Club website. Get it up on, it is.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Joe, anything from your area this evening?
I'm looking for medical.
All right. I got everybody right. April, anything from the city manager's office?
Sure, just a few things. Please note that as we come across holiday season, for starting in Thanksgiving through Christmas, to make sure that you look up the hours of City Hall, as they do get readjusted during that season a little bit, so please, if you're going to come in to pay a bill, please make sure that we're open, especially as we get toward the Christmas and New Year holiday. And I also just wanted to shout out to the clerk staff for a great and well-run election last week. They did an amazing job and really appreciate all their effort and time.
Yeah, speaking of that, let's go to the other end of the table, because, you know, I forgot the order already. Sherilyn, anything from the, anything happen in the clerk's office since we met?
We, we had a very smooth-running election last week, and I thank everyone who helped us with it, DPW, even as short-staffed as they are, was able to provide us with the help we needed. The CED director provided us with help. The candidates and their campaign crews were very receptive and obeying the rules and not causing any problems with campaigning. And our new crop of election workers melded extremely well with our seasoned veterans, and I have heard from, well, let's put it this way, I haven't heard from any one of them that they don't want to come back. Overwhelmingly, their experience was a positive one, and they look forward to joining us in future elections, so we're very excited.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry to pass you up there. Dan, anything from the legal world this evening?
Very briefly, Your Honor, I did receive on November 6th a communication from a proposed business interested in establishing a medical marijuana nonprofit. I am providing, I think Derek has already received a copy of the communication, I'll be providing that to him, and there'll be further dialogue and any developments when we brought you to council.
Thank you. Councilman Martin?
Just two things, I want to pile on with everybody else, and congratulate Sherilyn, you guys were awesome, you did a great job. It was a very smooth election. And secondly, I just am going to promote, Channel 4 has been promoting all night at 11, they're going to feature our Weight Watchers group again, and that's gotten some great press, and rightly so. So tune into Channel 4 at 11, and you can see more about it, so.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon?
I just want to say everything that everybody else is saying about Sherilyn and her staff, excellent, excellent election.
Really good.
Smooth as silk, and nice to vent the chamber through a couple nights ago. And speaking of the chamber, during this holiday season, please shop, wine, and dine in Ferndale.
Welcome.
On it right now.
All right. Mayor Protem, Piana?
Well, I also want to say congratulations to Sherilyn as well, but I wanted to also say, I'm just so proud of you and Marji for taking something that didn't go very well last year, and innovating and being creative and coming up with new solutions, and that's what I am so proud of, of our city workers doing on behalf of the community. When something just doesn't go as right as planned, you figure out how to do better, and that's what I want from our city employees on behalf of our citizens, and you just exemplify that. Makes me proud. Congratulations to the mayor on his reelection. Congratulations to Greg Pollocka, and I wanted to thank all the candidates who ran for office. It's very hard to put yourself out there when you've never done that and step up into the public eye, and so thank you, thank you for doing that. And of course, my update wouldn't be an update without transit, and...
Got to hear about it.
Well, we have been working under a two-year grant, and I've been under the, I've been the city liaison for the last two years to the Woodward Alternative Analysis, and the final public outreach meeting for the two-year grant is scheduled for Wednesday, December 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's going to be a joint meeting between Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale, and it's going to be held at the Kulik Intermediate School Cafeteria. And this is probably the most important public outreach meeting throughout the whole two-year grant period, because residents and business, and business owners will have an opportunity to review the various options for bus rapid transit down Woodward, as well as the trade-offs for those options, and what that means, and what each option means to travel times, how the feeder bus network will work with the bus rapid transit, where the stations, the final stations will go, how many riders are projected based off of each option, and really, basically, the next steps of the process in concluding, in concluding that review and getting it approved. And I'm not exactly clear on the final approval process with the new RTA, and that is being clarified, too, but that will be all worked out by December 11th. So please come, very, very important that everybody attends, so. And that is it. Thank you.
Excellent.
Congratulations to yourself, too, Melody.
Thank you.
Councilman Galloway?
Thank you. Of course, congratulations to the winners and to Sherilyn, y'all did a great job. I just wanted to make a brief comment. A former Ferndale resident, a good friend of mine, Gabe Orzami, attorney down at the federal courts, recently got some really bad news regarding his health, is facing some very significant challenges, and figured there might be some people in Ferndale who know Gabe or remember him when he lived in Lewiston. There's going to be a fundraiser to support Gabe and his family as they go through some, you know, pretty trying times. You can look it up on Facebook, it's Totally Tubular 80's Dance Benefit for Gabe Orzami. You can look it up on Facebook, it's Totally Tubular '80s Dance Benefit for Gabe Orzami. It's November 29th, but the family could really use your support, whether you're able to go or not. So if you look that up, or if you're not able to get to it, just let me know, and I can point you in the right direction. And other than that, that's it.
Excellent. I would just say I want to congratulate Melanie and Greg for your elections on Tuesday. I want to also acknowledge the three candidates who are not successful. If you've never, if you've never run an election, you, it's probably hard to understand what it's like to have your views and your thoughts and opinions out there in the public square being debated and analyzed and attacked a little bit, and it's, it's quite an experience, but I think that Sherri Wells and the department and Craig Covey all deserve our acknowledgement for making this a robust and interesting campaign season, and it was, and you can be congratulated for the way you conducted yourselves. And I want to thank the residents who supported me, I appreciate having another term on council, and I just promise that even if you didn't support me, I'll work just as hard for you as well. So I appreciate everyone's support. Thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned. What'd you say?